Hey. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Max Wolf. I'm the Public Policy Manager at the Charles River Chamber. We're happy to bring to you a conversation with three candidates running for the Ward Four at-large seats on the Newton City Council. Today you'll hear from Lisa Gordon, Sean Roach, and Ted Gross will be on the ballot for the November 4th citywide election. As for the parameters, this will be a one-hour debate. There will be no opening statement, but each candidate will have 90 seconds to complete a closing one. Other than the closing statement, we will not be using a timer. I do ask that each candidate be respectful of each other's time, keep their answers concise, and focus on the questions asked. I also reserve the right to interrupt and probably will do so in the interest of time. Recording today's debate will also be available after the fact, so look out for that. Finally, I informed the candidates of the last question for debate today's debate, which is if you could time travel to any one day in world history just to observe, but not to change anything, which day would you choose? So let's get into it. You're all new candidates, have never been in public office. It would be great if you could tell us a little bit about your professional background and how it would inform your work on the council. We're going to start with Sean on this one.
So thank you very much for having us. Just quick. Correction, we are the Ward Six candidates.
Oh, sorry.
Work for. I'm sure everyone figured that out, but nonetheless, so since college, I've been a waiter, managed restaurants, went to law school and was a lawyer. I was a Assistant District Attorney in Bronx County prosecuting primarily sex crimes and domestic violence with kind of a a focus on sex crimes against children. I was also a partner track litigator at what was then called Hale and Door is now Wilmer Hale. While I was at Hale and Door, I made a shift into technology. Found my home as a software product manager. Primarily focused on large, complex processes. In financial services and healthcare. So most recently really spent most of my time doing healthcare IT. And I recently, so those are the first three acts. I'm now in Act Four and I've recently taken a position at a nonprofit that manages six group homes for developmentally challenged adults, five of them in Newton and one of them is in Wellesley. So each of the things that I have done gives me a point of view. You wait tables, you learn what it is to do service. When you're a lawyer, you learn to think like a lawyer, you learn to think in terms of fact and holding and applying the fact to the holding and understanding how laws are written and applied. Then as a software product manager, you think in terms of use cases. How, who are we serving? Who is the user? Who is the? Yeah, who's the user and what do they need? Right? So the kind of, you know, all of those things are lenses through which I view problems and opportunities and will be super helpful when I'm on the city council.
Thank you. Now to Lisa, same question to you, a little bit about your background and how it would inform your work on the council.
Okay, great. I will say very quickly, I grew up in Newton and I moved back to Newton because I really enjoyed living here. My first job out of college was I moved to London straight after college and I started up with a group of people, an international anti-racist youth organization. I helped grow that into 40 different countries across Europe. The early 90s was a very interesting time to be politically active, especially in England, Scotland, and Wales, where there was a significant rise under the Tory government of racist murders and acts of violence against the Bangladeshi community in London. As a leader in that movement, I achieved a lot of skills, but the biggest one, I think, was thinking about what are the outcomes that we're looking to achieve and how do you do that? So what is our goal? And I would say, starting with that, it was an early education on how to take a 360 view of everything that you do, because whatever it is, there's an outcome. So if you're building a housing development and you make a choice not to put a path down to a road, what, what, what will the impact of that be? If there's only one egress in and out, right? You have to think about how people are going to be using the space. And in the 90s, at that time, it was often, how are we going to deal with what were then neo-Nazis? And why are people acting out this way? And we, we had significant impact on working with the youth to identify, you know, why they were so angry and what the issues were. And it helped provide a collaboration and a link with two very unlikely communities. When I moved back at the end of the 90s, the beginning of the 2000s, I became a small business owner. Then I worked for a startup. And then I eventually settled as the VP of Marketing for a small family-owned business. And this was a great job to have while I had children and I remained politically active in the Newton community at that time. Taking on a number of different roles and working with community groups. Most recently, I've become the Executive Director of the Acton Food Pantry, where I am on the cutting edge of working with the most vulnerable population in Massachusetts. I deal largely with food insecurity and with housing insecurity. We work very closely with housing authorities. And so my work there has pivoted from the anti-racist racist work I did into this community work. And it's very relevant in thinking about how, how our programming impacts the community and how we can try and increase positive outcomes for the people who use our services. So those are the, the highlights of my career. I've had a lot of little different jobs in between there. I started working when I was 12. And I will just say that the business community in Newton, I have a lot of friends who own small businesses. And I appreciate this opportunity to speak with the chamber because along the schools, I think businesses are the two foundations of what makes a wonderful community.
Thank you. Ted, you've spent a significant amount of time on various political committees. Why are you looking to transition, you know, from behind the scenes into the council and what in how will your professional background inform that work?
Well, I can first give you a little bit additional history of my background in that we moved, my family moved here when I was 13 and I've basically been in Newton mostly ever since. I graduated from Newton South during my senior year, my father died. And we had a deli restaurant that he had and I I had to, when I started college, I had to cut classes because different employees didn't show up and I had to fill in at the restaurant. And that happened, that went on for the next couple of years until we came up with a different solution for the restaurant. I did go away to college for a couple of years, but cost involved and I came back home from college. Got, you know, jobs at different locations. I eventually worked for a costume jewelry wholesale distributor. Where I dealt with customers, different stores and with the dealing with inventory and I worked at that, at that company for almost 30 years until it went bankrupt. Then I helped the owner start a new business. And responsible for hiring and doing the inside work while he did the outside work of finding customers. We built the business up that way. At some point I did leave his company to go back to school. As I said, I graduated in South in 66 and by the time I got back to school, it was 2001. I had gone to Northeastern evenings and graduated magna cum laude in management, information systems and management. I then ended up working for another company a couple of years later, dealing with again costume jewelry wholesale distribution. And right now I'm still with that company part-time. Overseeing inventory to make sure that we are able to fulfill orders in a timely manner.
Thank you, Ted. We, we just have to move on for time's sake, but thank you. Now to the issues, there's a considerable amount of economic uncertainty right now and our small shops and restaurants are really feeling that crunch. If elected, how would you help restaurants, retailers, other small businesses be successful? Let's start with Ted on this one. How would you help our small businesses?
Well, small businesses should be able to have something that City Hall regulations and et cetera that could help them out. And one of the things that I've thought of is when as candidates, we have to file reports with LCPF. And if there's a question as to what the procedure is, somebody is available almost immediately to be on the phone and answering you or emailing you. That can respond and explain how the procedure works and that's something I think that the city could have that would help small businesses when they have problems with dealing with city regulations. Somebody should be available to explain what is needed. And how they can function in the environment, in the regulations that are required as to businesses themselves and in the, in the different centers. They, they do rely on foot traffic and people that come by and there should be enough parking in the village centers.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. We, we just got to keep these answers short. We don't have too much time. So I'm going to kick it to Sean. In a time of such economic uncertainty, tariffs, immigration, all these issues, how are, how are you going to help your small businesses on the council?
So what the council can do is a few things. One, remove regulatory burdens, red tape. An example would be parking minimums that have hindered business or require businesses to spend money to get waivers, et cetera. Number two, land use policy, right? Ted was talking about feet on the street. The best way we can do that, we're seeing that really activating Newtonville is to have more housing in and around our village centers. We can do a lot on, the city council can do a lot on parking policy in terms of making sure that there's sufficient parking, adequate parking for employees and for high turnover parking for customers. Within City Hall, there's less we can do, but as a councillor, I would certainly advocate for the administration to develop playbooks. So that somebody who's starting a business or is going through a kind of well-known change, they just go to a, and they, and they pick up a playbook and they see here's the steps you got to go through. Here are the departments, here are the forms. Right now it's a maze, it's opaque and that should change. And then, you know, encouraging the mayor to be, to have a more customer-centric vibe ethic within City Hall.
Now Lisa, same question for you. How, how are we going to help our small businesses right now?
I love it because I can say I agree with Ted and I agree with a lot of what Sean said. I think parking, we have to remember that a lot of our customer base are people who are coming from Brookline and Wellesley and need them. I know a lot of people who come here and they want to be able to park and if they cannot find parking, they're not going to come here. They'll go to the next place where there's parking. So we have to be very thoughtful about that. Often when I'm going to travel, I'll go to a city's local website and they will have a business page. So I will know what restaurants are there. I will know what amenities are there. I think that City Hall, certainly our city website could do a better job of making sure that all of our businesses are there from banks to for new residents, almost, you know, whatever it is that you might want to find. I will put a shout out, I've been doing this all along to Oliver Newton. I think that that is, she does a great service about promoting all of our local businesses. I also think that the city needs to be very thoughtful when we're doing work on a street. Often there's things going on throughout Newton and we don't always let the businesses know ahead of time. And we also don't put signage out so that people who are coming to go to that business understand that that business is open. So the communication with our business owners could be strengthened considerably. I think ensuring that our village centers are as vibrant and beautiful and clean as they possibly can be will really help. Recently, there was a meeting at the Newton Highlands Area Council and they were talking about steps that they could take to really help the local businesses flourish. And one of those ideas was to put lights to help people guide them through. There's all sorts of little touches that can make a village center someplace that people want to congregate. And as a city and as a councillor, I will advocate to do that. I see your hand about to go up, so I'll stop there.
I definitely hear what you say about, you know, businesses needing to flourish. Recently marijuana shops are now new small businesses in town. Lisa, in the past, you've led a campaign to prevent these shops from opening. I was wondering if you regret that decision? Did your fears come true? What's your opinion right now on that?
So I didn't really have fears. I'll tell you, I was always for decriminalization of marijuana. That's been my position since I was a lot younger. And my position still remains actually that once you commercialize a product like that and you start making money on it, then you have an incentive. So I know, you know, legalization of pot isn't my favorite thing, but I didn't really have fears. I just wanted us to be able to vote on it as a community. And again, as I said, I was for decriminalization. I'm not so thrilled that there is a store right in the Village Center in Newton Center. The ordinance did say that they shouldn't be in village centers. I think it's better when they're set off slightly. I think there's better locations for them. But I will say the ones I've been in are beautifully done. They're very well organized. The security's been great. And, you know, that's an old campaign. I'm not still working on that, but I don't regret my time campaigning for a democratic process, which I will always stand behind.
Thank you. And Sean, over the last four years, marijuana sales have generated nearly 2.5 million in revenue for the city in filled empty storefronts. Do you, do you think we should have these small businesses in our city?
Yes.
Thank you. Same, same for you, Ted.
Yeah, I, I agree that they're a legal business, so let them open up generates income for the city.
Thank you. Okay, now let's move on to the Newton Center Plaza, which is in Ward Six. And there was a considerable amount of excitement, some disappointment and confusion about its rollout. Now the Traffic Commission will consider whether or not to retain it. So do you want the plaza to stay and how would you build consensus among businesses and residents for projects like these? Or maybe would you prefer that the city didn't pursue them at all? Let's start with Lisa on this one.
Newton Center definitely needed some love. Over the last 20 years, the only people who've been really working to keep Newton Center beautiful and vibrant have been local residents who've been working on picking up trash and making sure that the, the area looked nice and inviting. So I like that Newton Center was getting some attention. I think the rollout wasn't the best. And so you mentioned talking to business owners and collaborating, and I think that that's crucial. So the process to getting to the pilot was flawed. And I'm hoping that the process on making decisions going forward will be healthier and we will really talk to small businesses. My approach, and I've already begun it, is to talk to the businesses that are most impacted by the pilot program. And I've been getting a lot of mixed feedback. Some people love it. They feel that it's really helped their businesses. They cite all kinds of anecdotes that are very positive and some have felt that they cannot park. Some residents and some businesses and they have concerns around that. So all of that needs to be balanced and we need to start unpacking that. But the voices of the local businesses around the triangle are vital. Because as I think we all said at the top, people need to be able to find parking spaces in order to frequent our local businesses. Newton Center has now become a much bigger location for restaurants. We have fewer nail salons and fewer banks. And we want to keep that mix going. We're not quite there yet, but we could continue in that direction. I could start on housing, but I see your hand going up, so I'll leave it there.
So am I getting, would you want the plaza to stay or go?
I, I have, like anything I do, I need to listen to feedback to the people who are most impacted and I'm getting mixed feedback at this time. Personally, I love the lights that are there. Personally, I wish they'd put it on the green where there was pavement and grass. So we might've been able to have the best of both worlds, but given what we have now, I, I have my opinion, I think, is secondary to the residents and the commercial businesses around there. And I think that's what good leadership does is it takes all the voices into account.
Thanks. And Ted, same question to you. Would you want the plaza to stay or go?
Again, it would depend on what the businesses and the residents in the area thought of of the, how it functioned this year. I don't see it being able to function during the winter times. I think they have to put that, the equipment away. But also the, the location in the parking lot of where they put it. That's, those are easy parking spaces. And I would have thought that they would have used the tip of the triangle to put that experiment. And where it is a little bit more difficult to park at, in that tip. And so that, that's the only thing I would suggest is seeing how the businesses liked it and what the residents thought of it. Before deciding whether to go forward with, with it next year.
And Sean, what do you think about the plaza? And do you think we need to add parking? Parking that our merchants say is so important and helps with their customers.
So there are always going to be trade-offs. So quick historical note, 15 or 20, somewhere around 15, 20 years ago, I was part of a group that actually got a similar thing built in the triangle tip. It was a moderate success, but in any case, been there. I do want to say that that is not the biggest problem facing Newton Center. There are bigger problems, but this is the question you've asked. I think that there's plenty of parking in Newton Center. We, we know that. It's been studied over and over again. There, there, there may be some other opportunities for more parking, especially for employees. The, the structured lot next to the trolley east of Cypress, behind the office buildings on Center. I think we should explore that. The, the, the triangle itself is an asset that maybe is being underused. It's been considered as the senior center for housing development. Every newcomer to Newton comes and says, let's bury the parking underground. So I think that this is a, again, a small piece of a larger problem. I, like Lisa, talking to the business owners, the response has been very mixed. I think that the change has not been as bad as, as everybody thought it would be. I think frankly, it hasn't been as great as some folks had hoped. I think it's just a nice place. It provides shade, which I think is super important. And I think it's a supplement to the green. And that, that having put it, had we put it on the green, we lost the benefits of the green. So I think it's a nice supplement. So I would be in favor of keeping it based on what I've heard so far.
And you mentioned that, you know, you think the whole triangle is underutilized. Would you like to see the triangle in play for redevelopment?
You know, the way I think about Newton Center is it is seven strip malls around a common parking area. If you go into Newton Center, there are like three stores that are across the street from another store, directly across the street. And so if you think about it, it is not a, it is not the greatest retail space. It's not the most walkable space. And I think that, that doing something in the, in in the triangle to take advantage of, you know, the, the existing amenities, the existing stores would be great. I've seen plans for mixed-use residential over retailing. That would be great. I think the, the senior center was an interesting idea. So I would have to, I, I'm not prepared to propose a specific development, but I think that it's underused.
Okay, let's move on to housing. It's really the number one economic issue in the state and it's especially important here in Newton. Governor Healy's housing goal for Massachusetts is to build 220,000 new units by 2035. First of all, do you agree with that goal? And if so, what is Newton's responsibility to meet that? And how would you grade our progress to date? Let's start with Ted here.
Well, it's housing. The zoning laws are a good place to keep. Where right now, well, part of the thing of developing housing, it's sort of a complex process involved with that. I know that some of them come in, some developers come in, buy a house, tear it down and build a $3 million home or a $3 million duplex in there in its place. Part of the housing situation, maybe we could take existing houses, houses that instead of allowing them to be torn down within 24 hours after they've got the permit to tear it down, require them to be deconstructed. That will add cost, I know, to the cost of housing. But they, if they sell the parts off, which a lot of wood from the house and other parts in the house that they deconstruct is sellable. But they could then take the house and maybe refurbish it inside, maybe instead of a single family, maybe create a two-family or maybe three-family within the same housing area. That way they don't have to cut down all the trees and other things in, in the yard. They could keep the same footprint.
Thank, yeah. Thanks, Ted. Just quickly, do you think we're doing a good job on housing, Ted, Newton? How would you grade our progress?
I, 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 at this point, I'm not sure what, what our grade would be. I know we, we are attempting to come up with some solutions. Some of the solutions when developers come in, they, they need to really talk with the neighborhood and get some input before they move forward. Yeah.
Thank you.
Looks like you wanted me to stop.
Just, we don't have a lot of time, so if we can keep our answers as short as possible, that would be great. And Sean, not any specific policies, but just in, at a high level, do you agree with that goal? What is Newton's responsibility and how would you grade our progress?
Yes. Significant and okay. So yes, we need more housing in the Commonwealth. The outmigration is a problem for a whole host of reasons. Two, we're doing okay. We've got a lot of permitted units. Unfortunately, economic issues have caused a whole bunch of developments to either be delayed or paused. So mixed and where the units are not ideal. And that's a function of, of both policy and reality. The policy, which is against residential redevelopment means that, that most of the developments are going to go kind of at the edge of the city. And naturally, the edge of the city doesn't, isn't as well served by transit. At a high level, what we need is more housing. So more homes net and more different types of homes, right? The kind of homes that we build right now, the kind of homes that we have are causing economic stratification, exacerbating existing economic stratification. So more homes that serve young people who want to return, grew up in Newton, want to return, live here in their first job or so. Homes that are good for young couples who want to start a family or young families so that they can start and stay in Newton schools and then homes that are suitable for seniors. They need to be elevator accessible, close to amenities and with senior services. We need to just do more of that and the zoning code is the place to do that.
And Lisa, 220,000 units, is that a reasonable goal? And how do you think Newton has done? And do we have a big responsibility? And how do you think Newton has done? And do we have a big responsibility there?
I feel passionately about housing the most vulnerable vulnerable in our population. I'm not very worried about high end housing. But I do think that we need housing in Massachusetts and locally to especially house those that are unhoused or cannot afford housing in our community. I think we're doing okay. Where I would like to see us meet the ten percent threshold so that we could become a safe haven. We've three thousand seven hundred units, eleven percent of our housing has been approved since twenty twenty. We just have a new housing project. Apparently, Cork is selling the Valley Rice building. So we're looking at a pretty big development there. We have five hundred and thirty units going in near Craft Street. So we we've got a lot of things going on in the pipeline. It's not really up to us. We just approve the developments. So it's a little bit unfortunate, the ones that have been approved and have taken a while to move forward, but those will be coming online soon as well. So, you know, I think that that's okay. I do agree that we need different types of housing and we need different price points. I would like to be able to see that our teachers and the people who work in Newton are able to live in Newton more easily. And I think that's going to take some creative solutions. I think we also have to be thoughtful that for most homeowners, their home is their biggest asset. And so we have to balance our zoning along with how how we work with the community. And so I think that those are, those are important. You know, important things to balance as we move forward.
Sean, would you, would you agree that it's not really up to the council? How Newton is, is, you know, how many developments are coming into Newton, everything like that?
That's not what I said.
What did you? Well, I I could, well, can we at least clarify? So let me, what do you mean by it's not up to you as the council?
I said the council approves it, and then it's up to the developer to build it. That's what I said.
Okay.
So let me answer a different question, if I can, Max, which is what can the develop? What can Newton do to make it easier to build in Newton? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so our development process takes too long. One of the reasons why developers choose forty B, and I think this is the safe haven that Lisa was referring to, although I would not refer to it myself as a safe haven, is that once we have ten percent, it's complicated formula of our units affordable, then developers no longer have the choice to use forty B, which only requires a site review through the planning board as opposed to a full special permit process. The special permit process in Newton is onerous, and we've seen this over and over again, where it takes so long to build something, sorry, so long to get it permitted. By the time the they go to build, the economics are not there to support the project. We've seen this at Riverside, we've seen this at Northland, we saw this in Craft Street with the senior center, a senior, the senior living center that was proposed. So if we are going to, if we are going to get the housing that we want and we need, we need to have a more streamlined, more housing friendly city council. Now, that that does not mean giving the developers what they want. And one of the things that that I'm fond of saying is, most of us live in homes that were built by developers who wanted to make money. It's a perfectly legitimate way to build housing. The problem we have and the problem that Ted was referring to with McMansions and it 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 applies across large, lots of building types is developers look at the rules and they say, how can I make money? And if our ordinances, our zoning ordinances only provide a profit opportunity to build big, energy intensive, economically unaffordable homes, that's what we're going to get. If we change the incentives, that developers are building what we want to have and we make it easier to build, we will get the housing we need.
Thank you. And I think that dovetails to the next question of do we need to reform our special permit process for housing in the city? Lisa, Sean, I think hinted at that we do need to make it easier, the special permit process. Would you agree?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with reviewing the special permit process.
Okay. Ted, would you want to review the special permit process, reform it, make it easier to build in the city?
Well, I would review it. Not necessarily that you want to get rid of all the regulations, but you know, if there's some snags in in the in the system, may maybe smooth it out. But I also think that the the special permit process allows the city council to put some regulations on what what can or cannot be built in certain areas. And maybe they may may see as a group, they may see an area that can help us get some affordable housing in there. And though through those kind of regulations, I'd be willing to look at it. You know, I'm not wedded to, you know, go in one direction or another. I can only tell you what I am, what what direction I'd like to head. But I'd also be open to listening to arguments on on the other side. And, you know, maybe come up with a solution that was acceptable to all.
Thanks. And then a couple more on housing. When when you speak to our business owners, they always talk about foot traffic. What would you do in the council to drive foot traffic to our businesses? It could be any solution to help our businesses get the customers they need. Let's start with Lisa on this one.
I think it dovetails back into my earlier answers, that people have to know what businesses you have here. You need to make your streetscapes inviting. You know, there was an idea that we should be building more in our village centers. And I don't disagree with that. People talk about the Walgreens building in Newton Center. And unfortunately, even though we have the zoning to make that very easy, the owners of that building have other priorities. And building above the Walgreens is not one of their priorities at the time for right now. I do think we need to remember that all our village centers are surrounded by housing. And so we need to ensure that the people who are living near our village centers have amenities that are in the village center that they want to frequent. As much as me talk about not liking parking and debating the parking, again, lots of people drive and they need to be able to park to go into our stores. So I think that's an important component. The other side of this, which we don't talk about a lot, is that when we also close commercial businesses, we we are all connected in some way. So the Clark's Building that got closed at Northland, that impacted the dry cleaner that was nearby there, and they're hurting. So we can say that it's okay that we're losing commercial, which I don't agree with. I think it's imperative that we keep commercial and that we stop saying it's okay to get rid of it. And we need to combine it more because I'm seeing too much getting rid of commercial and bringing in housing, and that has got to be balanced. But we need to have industry here as well. And the people, doctors, lawyers, people working at the Clark's factory, they were using dry cleaning. So we have to be thoughtful about how all of these things are integrated together. I'm going to stop here, but I have plenty of ideas on how to draw business into Newton.
Thank you. And and Sean, do you respond to that? And how would you drive foot traffic to our businesses?
I I mean, at the risk of oversimplifying. I read an article in the Boston Business, or no, Bankers and Tradesmen about twenty years ago that explained the success of Newberry Street, which is a relatively low density, low rise commercial strip. And it was, people pour out of the apartment buildings, they go into the shops, and that creates a catalyst for, it it creates some vitality that other people want to be around. And so that it draws people in. So we need to have people who live near our village centers enough that they they generate the foot traffic that generates the business. Again, we're seeing this overwhelmingly being proven true in Newtonville. People, I mean, I'm going to city council meetings for, you know, two decades. And one of the things you always hear from city councillors, Board of Aldermen, residents is I don't want Newton to be Somerville, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge. Newark was a recent one. I live in Newton Center. I would like Newton Center to be like Newtonville, right? Newtonville is showing us the roadmap. It's right there. We don't need to go searching for any wildly new innovative ideas. The other thing is, is that that Newton Center, their lights out, the sidewalks are too narrow and they're in crummy shape. The the basic amenities, the 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 street fabric is not great. And and the city doesn't have the money to to refurbish it the way we refurbished Newtonville. And one of the reasons we don't is is it's a vicious cycle, right? This 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 businesses are not doing well enough to fund the kind of investment we need to make the businesses do better. So, you know, it's going to take a little while, and there's some things we can do like the, you know, trials like the Plaza. But people drive business success. And by the way, I forgot to answer, one thing I do for my village centers is I eat there. So if anyone would like to join me, happy to meet at any restaurant in Newton anytime.
Thank you. And and Ted, do you agree that, you know, Newtonville should be a model for Newton Center?
Well, each village has different, unique properties of that village, the people around there. They some of the development that went on in Newtonville, you know, I I heard a lot of rumblings when it was being developed. I I don't know what the, how people feel about how it's actually developed today. But I I know that there were a number of people that really didn't like having a lot of the businesses and homes in that area taken away. You know, it's the, some of the other villages have different properties to them that make them unique. And each village, I think, you know, has a uniqueness that draws people to it for various reasons.
Thanks. And and Lisa, do you think, you know, the development patterns in Newtonville could be a model for Newton Center?
I think they're different villages. And Newtonville has a mass pipe running through it. So I think that Newton Center, I I would rather pivot back and talk about, you know, Sean went on about the triangle there. And I was on the Newton Center Task Force, and we posited all different kinds of ideas, including pre pilot was actually extending the green and doing something similar. And we found parking for everywhere that could be done. I'd love to see something like Post Office Square in Newton Center. I think that would maybe be a different way of enhancing Newton Center. That's not exactly saying we want to be Newtonville. I think all our villages have their own unique styles, and we need to act on what is great about them. I, the introduction of the cafe model outside on the streets has been huge. And I think we shouldn't discount what a page turner that has been for Newton Center. Even though, and I agree with Sean, there there are a lot of infrastructure issues in Newton Center and upkeep. But that has been a wonderful asset that is actually not supported very well by our city. So when you asked before, what can we do for our local businesses? Well, we could work with them on trying to make wonderful assets that draw people into Newton Center to visit the restaurants and the cafes. We could make that easier for them instead of putting up new hurdles each and every year since that's been implemented.
Okay, one final question on housing, we're going to keep it quick. In your last debate, a lot of you talked about adaptive reuse to help build more housing. Would you support allowing any single family house to be adapted into a duplex, a triplex or a quadplex? Again, really, one sentence or a little bit more answers. Let's start with Ted on this one.
Well, as I said about fifteen minutes ago, I think it was when you were asking about it. You know, maybe depending upon what what's proposed in in the in the area, maybe a house could be refurbished, somebody that wants to sell it and maybe create within the same housing footprint without tearing it down. A two or three family within the unit itself that would, you know, for smaller families that would provide low income or moderate income housing for that family.
Thank, thank you, thank you. Lisa, same question to you.
Look, I grew up in a Victorian that was a one family house that was converted. My mother was the second donor. Two sisters converted it into a two family house. And it was a fantastic place to grow up in, and it made a lot of sense. So I'm a big proponent of adaptive reuse, but you're a blank in answer. Can any house, well, the devil is in the details, right? So let's look at that. But I would say I'm predisposed to wanting to take older, beautiful homes and turn them into multifamily homes.
Sean?
This debate has actually been had in the context of Village Center Overlay District, which allows for a density bonus, meaning more homes in a, on a particular plot or larger homes if the original building is adaptively reused. I'm generally in favor of it. The problem is, is very expensive and it's becoming more expensive. You know, fire laws, entrance and egress regulations. So I'm not sure that it's the solution to saving our older homes. But yeah, and and specifically around our village centers.
So would would you be a favor in allowing any single family house to do this or no?
Right now, I think we need to focus on more housing around the village centers. So I would say yes to doing that within the confines of of, you know, the areas around village centers, not necessarily across the the city. But again, I I don't think this is a silver bullet.
Okay. And so let's switch gears to commercial tax base. How would you help attract large companies here? Would you consider, you know, offering them a tax break as Needham did? You know, they they lured TripAdvisor, NBC Ten from Newton to Needham. So let's start with Sean. What would you do to attract these large businesses?
So I think the TripAdvisor, and and I'd have to be fact checked on this. I think the TripAdvisor ended up being a net loss for Needham. So TripAdvisor moved and then it became a much less successful company and and the the building is underused. We, for the next ten to fifteen years, we are not going to see new commercial Class A real estate. The market is not there, there's not financing for it. So we have to be thinking longer term. And I think the answer is going to be where are, where is the land available for the large scale development that would be required for a commercial office space? We are currently subsidizing three private exclusive golf courses, two of which have substantial land along the MBTA and and actually connect three tea stations. That's one of the places I'd look is to say, how do we get that subsidy removed so that that land could be, you know, either more more favorably taxed as a golf course or more available for commercial development, actual real constructive, open space, housing, schools, parks, playgrounds? But it's hundreds and hundreds of acres.
Thank you. And I'm not sure that TripAdvisor has been a net negative to Needham. I think that I think it's been a lot of benefit to the to the town over there. Lisa, to you, how do we get these companies back or how do we attract big companies? Is it even possible?
Why aren't we talking to the companies that are looking for space and finding out what they want? And also talking to the companies that have left. My husband worked for a company that was very successful in West Newton. And they left for the Seaport, and I don't think anybody reached out to discuss with them. Well, what could we do to keep you here? You're a valuable part of our community. And we have local people are working here, and we would like to do what we can to keep you here. So first, we should be looking at why we're losing people and whether thinking about, well, what do we have here? And how can we do outreach to bring people here? I'm not against tax incentives, I'd need to learn a lot more about it. But I I think attracting people here, we do have limited space. That is a hundred percent true. And of some of the space that we have, the owners don't want to sell or they want to sell to the right partner. Our EDC person did a study on a piece of land. Um, our EDC person did a study on a piece of land in Newton that would be wonderful for mixed use development. But he only posited putting housing there and the owners weren't ready to sell. So we could be doing a lot more by ma- having a more robust, uh, EDC. Department that really worked on finding out what it is that we need to convey. To bring people in and start having those conversations. Uh, as far as I know, we don't do that.
And Ted, uh, really quickly, would you be in favor of tax breaks to large businesses, um, to attract them? And what would you want to do to attract these businesses?
Well, uh, I mean, we- looking at large businesses, uh, you have, uh. Starbucks, uh, in, uh, Warbin, it's closing. Because they're not performing by what the national organ, uh, company wants. Maybe we don't want to encourage, uh, you know, some, some, uh.
Ted, I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, you know, like, uh, large employers really, um, um, to the city.
Yeah, well. Large, large, you know, s- small businesses create jobs. Large businesses create jobs, but, you know, if they, because the, the, it's underperforming. They pull the, the company out of the city. What good was having it in the city in the first place? Small businesses that, uh, bring, uh, uh. The, the person that's probably running the small business lives in Newton and wants to maintain. And get the company, uh, going forward within the city. Maybe they, they can grow it within the city and they would have more of an incentive to develop the, the company here. Which would add more employees to their, uh, base, uh, of jobs in the city.
Mm-hmm, and, and Ted, I'm, I'm getting some, you know, mixed, um. I'm, I'm, I'm troubled following your answer on that one. And, 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 and some of your answers before you're asking for consensus and, and I'm interested. Why, why specifically are you running, uh, for city council?
Uh, I'm running because I'd like to contribute to the city, uh, and, um. Have. And, uh, be able to, uh, present, uh, issues, uh, going forward. That, uh, would, uh, help the city, uh, move forward.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, last, last question before we get into the, uh, final, final round. Um, Newton has adopted ambitious climate goals. What's your plan to ensure the city meets these goals while balancing affordability and growth? Both for commercial and residential, um, you know, residents, uh, let's start with Lisa on this one.
Yeah, uh. I think that there needs to be a lot of data that look, that is looked at, right? So they started with Burdo, but that's going to cost, uh, residents and commercial owners. Uh, what is feared to be, uh, a lot of money, which is then going to increase people's rents. So there, again, if this is an ecosystem, uh, ecosystem that we have to pay, pay attention to and how we're going to roll that out. If Newton has a great climate action plan, I, it's being worked on and revised. I would add to that, that we need a biodiversity plan that just looking at housing. And not including our environment and making sure that we are saving green space. And looking at what we have now, looking at the past where we have been. You know, building on swamps and having a lot of sewer issues. We have to think about how this works together. And that is something I would be excited to work on if I make it onto the city council.
And, and, and you mentioned, I think, you know, rising rents, uh, with these regulations. Do you think it's the, do you think it is the time to pursue Burdo if it's going to raise rents?
I, I have concerns about Burdo, uh, uh, you know, we need to look at the first set of data has come out. We need to look at that. One of the questions that I think all three of us get asked is, do we want to take Burdo further? And for me, I need to understand what we've done. Someone just approached me recently. Uh, they're partnering with someone from MIT to do, um, trajectories to look at what the impact could possibly be. We have to understand that. I don't, you know, if we're going to start hurting our businesses and, um, increasing rents, we have to figure out what all those trade-offs are. Climate action is crucially important. It is an existential threat that we have to pay attention to. But my whole thing is about looking at how systems work together and making sure. That we are making the right steps to get the outcomes that we truly want.
Thanks, and, and, and so same question to you, Ted, um, how do we balance, you know, our climate goals with affordability?
Uh, well, uh, yeah, again, uh, as Lisa referred to Burdo. Uh, there's data coming from it as businesses fulfill the requirement of stating their, uh, usage. And, uh, as we, you know, get more data. Uh, that would help us refine where we actually want to go. And, and until we, I don't know if we've gotten enough data from it. But, uh, you know, I, I would rely on that information. Uh, and, you know, again, uh, some of the, what I had talked about earlier. Uh, with, uh, uh, with, with deconstructing houses. Uh, that would reduce our, uh, greenhouse gas emissions. And, uh, the teardowns, they do, they do create problems in the environment. Where, you know, what kind of material was in their house that, uh, becomes particles that you breathe in. You know, uh, and you want to be a star, okay?
Thank you, and, and, and Sean, do you think, do you have, you know, similar serious concerns about Burdo? And do you think we, you know, should rethink about expanding it?
Um, so let me back up for a second, then I'll directly answer your question if that's okay. One is, um, one of the things I'll do as a city councillor, every time we talk about something. Whether it's clearly climate or not clearly climate, say, what are the climate implications here? And what is the impact of doing and not doing the right thing vis a vis the climate, right? Um, and then what are the trade-offs? So there are trade-offs, um, acknowledge that. Um, but climate is, Lisa says, an existential threat, so it's tough for me to say like, okay, if it's existential threat. There, you know, we got a balance. Obviously, we have to get to a certain point. The one thing that encourages me is over the last several decades, one of the things we've learned is. When we start to get into actually taking climate action. It turns out not to be as expensive as we thought it would be, and it turns out to have economic. Um, it, it driving economic growth. We learned this with, with, uh, green energy, and we're seeing this with, with, um, well, we, we could have been seeing this with, with EVs. So there, there are, it's not necessarily all negative that we turn our attention to. Um, greening up the things that we can green up. I will also add, and now I've lost the thought. Um, I, I won't add anything else because the thought went in now, boom.
Okay, um, we're running out of time, so I'm going to get to, uh. If you could time travel to any one day in world history, just to observe, but not to change anything, which would you choose? Ted, real quickly, um, let's keep these very short, um, what would the, your day be?
Um, with, um. Yeah, I'd probably, um, you know, I, I've, I've thought of that. And it's just so many different things out there that, uh, maybe you could have, but, uh, I haven't. You know, uh, may, maybe, uh, when, uh. Uh, LBJ, uh, you know, signed the, uh, the. The, uh, the, uh. Uh, there was, uh. Yeah, I, I, there was just too many different things to, to choose from and I really couldn't choose. Uh, any particular area to go back in, in history.
Thank you, um, and, uh, Sean, to you.
I would, I was going to choose, um, being in the original audience in the Globe Theatre. When Shakespeare's King Lear was first premiered and to experience that, um, with the audience. That it was initially written for, I think that would be, you, you can't capture that now. Um, but I'm not going to use that one, um, uh, I would go back to a, uh. Go see a Dead show, um, with my late brother.
Thanks. And Lisa?
July twentieth nineteen sixty-nine is the date that I chose. And that's the date that Neil Armstrong became the first human to walk on the moon and put down our flag. I felt like that was an aspirational moment. It showed what human beings can do with technology. It was a global event that six hundred and fifty million people worldwide were able to watch on their televisions. And I feel like it represents my approach to leadership, which is collaborative and aspirational. And transparent and inspiring, not, you know, that, that things that we can do. And it ushered in a new era of human exploration. And it was just an incredibly huge achievement, so that's the day I picked.
Thank you, and we didn't get time for a closing statement, so I'm sorry about that. Um, but thank you all for participating, uh, so much. And just to let the audience know, we have an election landing page with all our debates, um, and where you can register for our future debates. Um, which is going to be Ward Four, uh, so we will send that out in an email as well as the recordings. Uh, thank you everyone and have a nice day.
Thank you, Max, thank you.